This is a special board meeting just to discuss the accreditation progress. We have all of the board members here. Let's go ahead and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the freedom of liberty which will save us. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Okay, so I think most of you know Debbie and Ken are two ACCT assistants. Who are working hard with the board and the administration to work on accreditation. So if you look here, do you want to take over at this point, Ken?
That's fine.
Okay, fine.
First of all, it's good to be back with y'all. It's good to have all five board members here. It shows great commitment on the behalf of the of the board. We're going to get into the board goals, but before that, I think it's, I think we should talk a little bit about what we've been doing today, what we've been doing really the last month and a half, and that's really concentrate. For on behalf of the board, if you remember, that was our agreement that Debbie and I would take the lead in working with Steve and writing the report on your behalf. And we sent the first three parts of the report to y'all. We came up with a system of review for 10 days. And then if there's comments, we would send for further review, a final draft. And so we appreciate y'all looking at that. We didn't hear any comments. And so we assume then that's approval of that. That's how that it works. And so we've gotten three down, which is excellent. And that would be part of the report that's going to be submitted in September. And the idea is not to overwhelm you with a whole bunch of a total report all at one time, but really segmented into the different parts of it. And and send it to you as we're doing it. We're happy to say that you'll be receiving another three segments this coming Friday. And you'll have 10 days to work on it. If you don't need more time, just let us know. I mean, that's it's it's we're not that much under the gun on this, but generally, we're going to follow the 10 day comment period. We've been having good cooperation with with everyone involved with this. Your attorney has been helpful to us. Colton, I want to say thank you to you. And when we're working on this, and I think Debbie will say the same thing, Steve will say the same thing. We've made great progress, folks, in the past several months. There may have been some foundational work and some of the work that was done beforehand, but we have things that we can tangibly report. And have evidence of that we're presenting, whether it's the lawsuits being settled, contract with the president, policies being developed. Structure of board meetings, decision making, knowing roles, all those types of things. So that's important. If we, you know, we couldn't give a report if we didn't have some evidence to report. And so y'all deserve credit. I want to especially thank you, Mike, in your leadership role as chair. Because this is about reporting. If you if you remember correctly, the colleges' recommendations have been answered. It's really the governance issues are the outstanding issues that that need to be addressed. And this is, as you'll see with the later in the agenda, this is the uncharted territory because we don't know of another college which is under the same sanctions of this severity for governance issues. And so trying to figure out the path, we can't copy someone else's plan. There is no other plan to copy. And so the best thing we can do is have these types of training sessions by showing the the result of hopefully of the training sessions in your leadership by evidence at the board meetings. And that's what we're trying to do with this. So as far as the plan going forward, as I said, we're going to send you three more recommendations this coming Friday, maybe Monday, but hopefully Friday. We're looking to possibly consider Tuesday, August 27th, as our another final training session before accreditation. That would be the day before your board meeting. So we need to discuss whether that will work for for y'all, if August 27th from 3:00 to 5:30 would work. And then I want to call your attention to that, and Steve knows this certainly, that Monday, August 14th and Tuesday, August 15th is when the visiting team is going to be here. And October, what did I say? Oh, yeah, that'd be terrible. Thank you for that correction.
What was that date again?
October 14th, which is a Monday, and Tuesday, October 15th. I would ask that y'all kind of put a hold on your calendar for October 14th. That's the date that's probably where the committee members are going to be meeting with the board. We don't know the structure. As Steve finds that out, he will he will let you know. But if you could put that date on your on your calendar as a whole date, that'd be good. And we, as you probably know, there's new liaison. Ron Larson, who was the liaison with the commission, has retired. We're not sure if it has anything to do with us or not, just kidding. But we have a new liaison and then we Debbie and I and Steve have a conference call set up with him. He wants to call just with the three of us a week from Monday. Is that correct? Yeah, we just next Monday, so.
Anyway, it is through the two and you two.
Two and Steve. It's just he can have other meetings, but he requested that one. We're still hoping to have a meeting, another meeting with Sonny where we speak as your advocates. So I'd ask more about the the commission and who's exactly coming and making sure that we have folks who know community college governance.
That's what kind of like an update on that type of thing. We're going to get into accreditation, but anything more there?
No.
While we go into the board goals thing.
So just to go through the agenda with you real quickly, this was designed specifically around accreditation and the and the issues that NWCCU has pointed out and the work that the board has done and that the college has done. So if you just look at it real quickly, the first thing that we're going to do is go over the goals and the and the board plan to achieve those goals. The reason for this is that in your goals, you said that you would do a mid-year update to them. And so this will count as that mid-year update. Okay. And then and then we're going to look at specifically the board policies that that the NWCCU said in their recommendations, the board needs to provide evidence that they have continued training on those specific policies. And so those are listed for you and you have a copy of them. And then we're going to talk, since they in several recommendations, they mentioned board roles and responsibilities and best practices. We are going to just take a few minutes to review some of those, even though we've gone through them with you and we know that you've had a lot of training, so we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on it. But it is specifically mentioned in several recommendations, so we do want to provide that evidence. And then we're going to have a general discussion about accreditation, and that's where it's a discussion between all of us. Okay. And then we will have a break in there and and then we will have the action item about the compliance with the mandate to develop teach-out agreements. Again, this is somewhat like emergency planning. You do it, but you hope you never have to implement it. And this teach-out agreements are things that with all the great work that's going on to to resolve accreditation recommendations. This is something that we hope and plan never gets implemented, but we still have to comply with that regulation. And then we we want to just briefly recap some of what Ken just told you about the show cause report and and go through the recommendations with you. So we're going to get started on the board goals. And if you could just turn to the second page of your agenda. We gave you a copy of your board goals. They were approved approved in October of 2023. So this is a little bit, they were they were your goals for this year though. So this is good timing for us to relook at them. And I'm going to call your attention, you can talk about any that you want, but I'm going to call your attention number one, because that's accreditation. And it says that you'll continue working with the president and the college to address the recommendations. Which were you hopefully saw in your first three recommendations, we were able to cite several examples that demonstrated that those recommendations have been partially addressed at least. And then we're continuing to do that with the other recommendations. The middle goals are things that you do and you've been doing and you need to continue doing about community engagement, monitoring and oversight, educational quality and student success and financial responsibility. So I'm going to skip down to the board effectiveness one because that one deals a lot still also with accreditation. And in that, you said that you realize the serious work that you faced for with accreditation. And if you look, you've accomplished several of the key actions that you said that you would do. One of them is establish clear mutually agree upon goals for the president. President brought forward goals and you discussed them, revised them, and they were approved. And then C, update all governance policies and ensure, and those are the internal board governance policies, and you have updated them and approved them. You may look at some again, but the subcommittee brought forward recommendations, the board discussed them and approved them. And then D, the Board of Trustees, adhere to the board policy on your own performance review. You all have successfully submitted your your responses to the to the president's performance review. We just got the word that all five of them were submitted and accepted by ACCT. And you'll be getting back a report on that. And then E is conduct a mid-year progress update on your board goals, which is what we're going to, we are in the process of doing right now. And then F cultivate a strong positive president-board relationship that promotes the success of NIC students and the community college as a whole. And I think that's one that we continue working on. We did spend time in one of our workshops talking about trust and how important that was to relationship building. And some of the things that when there is a lack of trust that you can do, we might want to revisit that again and talk further about it. So that's your goals. Do any of you want to point anything else out that I missed or that you want to really accentuate a little?
I have a question.
Sure.
You talked about the mid-year progress update of board goals.
Yes.
So and you're talking about that being in process.
Right now. This is the board goal that we're talking about right now.
Today, and we achieved that objective today. Yes.
We will. After we look at it, after we finish, we're going to look at your plan to achieve board goals and you're going to see how you're doing and if you need to change anything. Okay?
And let me say, you know, when when writing the report for the accreditation authorities, many of these goals relate to directly, whether they, it's just not the first one, direct directly to the accreditation report. And some of them are indirect. You know, the the positive report that your president gave on retention of 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 college staff, which is one of the concerns that was expressed. Enrollment was another concern expressed, those types of things, the the maybe the appearance of stability at the college has helped, has helped with those those factors. So we're tying the board's activity and the board's role in that to those factors of success too.
The results.
Right.
And even though I skipped over them quickly, if you look back at two through five, that also speaks to Ken's point just now. Those are where the board demonstrates that they stay at the appropriate level in those areas. Okay. In monitoring and oversight and and you and this president are involved in the community and and ambassadors for the college. Okay. So let's, if you're okay, if nobody has, yeah, certainly.
I think it may be in the board's priorities. Scope, something that the board cares about to ensure NIC's partners and alliances, I guess you'd say, not really alliances, but just partners in external relations are, but no, more partners and external relations are in the long-term interest of North Idaho College.
More great.
Are you saying you want to change a goal?
No, add, he wants to add.
Add one more goal. How about just long-term, we call it a long-term plan or long-term planning that we're kind of working that master plan that it, you know, reflects kind of all the values that stakeholders at North Idaho College have here and also just the long-term vision and like, okay, if we partner with X person, where will we be in three years?
Kind of like with the mining letter which you took, but by the way, this is a very, very nice letter. All all deserves.
Yeah, that was a that was a great letter. So like that that type of board oversight, like board goals as in like, and that's a great example to where like, hey, North Idaho College is doing, you know, this and this and like, hey, you know, that's that's aligning where North Idaho College should be heading in in five years.
Why don't you give Debbie and I a chance to words with that? And you know, you can take formal action on it at a board meeting. That sound good?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'd love to work with you on that.
Sounds good.
Go ahead. You want it? Okay, so did anybody else have anything they wanted to say about the how your progress is towards meeting your goals that you're for for this year? Let's go into the plan then, okay? And this one, I am going to ask you to look at especially, you can, you can look at how the staff has done and by staff, we mean under the direction of the president, that these things will be presented to the board or given to the board or provided in a report structure. But on the the board responsibilities, look closely at how you're doing on meeting your board responsibilities. And if anything needs to be added or or changed in that section, okay? Because we can update those. Those are your your ways you're going to meet the goal. Okay. So let's look first at goal one accreditation. And if you could just read those, and they're up on the screen also. And
I think, just go for it, just to help speed this along.
Sure. Yeah, this is discussion.
I feel like we've all done number one.
Okay.
I feel like we've all done number two. And number three, I don't know if we've necessarily had any community outreach programs related to accreditation. I'm sure trustees have had conversations, they can all self-reflect on their own conversations of how that's gone. And then number four, provide input into responses to NWCCs of this for this first three around. We didn't necessarily do that. I'm assuming that's because people thought it was good. I thought those three that I read painted most everybody in a good light. I do have one sentence. I'm thinking of contributing to the middle of it. I know that the ending was but I was I was hoping to have a conversation before I put it in writing and and the whole strategic public records in negative press onslaught happens. So I was hoping to just have a conversation with you and I haven't scheduled that yet.
That's good. We'd be glad to.
Is there anybody who wants to add anything? Yes.
Can I just say, I think that's really good comments and I had the same experience going through the report. I spent three hours and at that point I kind of gave up because I thought it was pretty good.
We only got the three.
The three, right.
Three, right. We're talking about the same thing.
Well, you are providing input. And by the way, you know, we've worked with y'all over a year now, so we kind of know what the some of the things to talk about. That's why.
No, but I will say both Ken and I and Steve, as we were, as we were going through this, it was, it was really rewarding. We felt that we could really write about progress. So it it's, we're excited about meeting with NWCCU. If the work can continue and good board meetings and good interaction and good support of the president and the president of the board, then you guys are on the right track to resolving the recommendations.
And really what I was trying to say was I really liked the reports and I thought they were very constructive. And I thought they documented pretty well where we're going and then you'll continue to refine those, right?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Terry?
I'll just add that I reviewed what you provided several times. And I looked pretty hard to try to find something that was out of place or something that was missed. And I think you guys did a really good job, all three of you, of how far you reached. And a lot of the things that you had brought up were recent developments, but there were some that were in the past as well. And I think that is something especially to celebrate, something that's not new. That's something that we did a while back. I think that makes the board look better. And I didn't reply because I.
That's fine. We said if you don't have any changes, then we'll assume it's good to go. But one thing, the Accrediting Commission did ask us to speak about things that had happened between the last visit and now. So we are trying to really concentrate on work that has been done since then.
Between the last visit?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, in October, October last year, right, the 31st.
Or last report, was it last visit or last report, Steve? Either one?
It was, you mean the timeline?
Like, what are we supposed to address in this new report?
Oh, yeah, we're focusing since January. So the February 2nd, yes, meeting over there. Like, there's a little overlap, but but it is, you'll see, once we get finished with the introduction, we'll share with everybody that it's an ongoing that we we have somewhere in there that we're trying to focus since January.
But I think to Terry's point, something started even before then and then came to fruition. So we talked about that.
And some of the recommendations refer to something in the past. We have to address it. You know, it's still a current recommendation.
You're talking about focus.
Yeah.
Where you're putting most of your effort.
Sure.
So are we okay moving to community engagement and looking out what the board said they would do? If you could take a minute and read that, it's on, again, it's on the board and you have a copy.
Well, y'all certainly have done this.
You can host with the ledge. Any trustee you want to speak to those five commitments?
At all. Great. So we had all five at the graduation ceremonies. I think at the there's many graduation ceremonies. It'd be nice to get a maybe an inventory of all of them in the report. That'd be interesting. And I personally attended the Fiddler on the Roof recently at the theater productions. Also, the
How was it?
That was amazing.
Yeah, I actually looked to see it, but they're not showing tonight. It's tomorrow night.
It's worth staying another night. It was noticeably impressive. And I'd even say there's been a change that hasn't happened before, at least to my memory. Maybe I'm missing, forgetting something. But we were all actually invited to local high schools to hand out foundation scholarships. So that's a new.
That's awesome.
So at least I I took up.
Actually were able to do that.
That is fantastic. You know, you guys might want to, because you're going to do an evaluation on these goals that that you on yourselves, a self-evaluation, you might want to jot down some of the things so you remember when you do your evaluations to some of the things that you've done. Anybody else want to speak to that one?
And let me say, we don't, as far as accreditation, we don't turn in those evaluate, we say you evaluated yourself. That's the important, the action is the important thing, not what is stated in there particularly.
And you still have a few months before you have to do your self-evaluation. This is mid-year.
I would I would just say knowledgeable about pending legislation affecting community colleges. I just don't you know, in January, March timeframe, thinking of it, I just don't think of just trying to recall, not a lot of if there wasn't or not a lot of knowledge.
Y'all did it. Your board, we discussed a certain issues. You discussed the policing, driving range. And and Mike and Todd went up to to or down to Boise. I'm up in Tallahassee, so it's down to Boise.
I throw that in four, letters of support for key community college legislation, either as a collective or as an individual. So we did four. And that's not almost.
Wasn't much. Yeah, I think that's what Todd reported. There wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of substantive. This was not a community college year.
Anybody else?
But no, I'm not disagreeing, but you're right. That's something which
I'm looking at, we did all of it except for the signed letters of support for key community college legislation.
You did that.
With the funding for the for the post account.
Give guidance for next area.
Yeah, I know. We talked about that. I don't remember the precisely the letter, but we probably did that. So, okay, so everything.
Right.
Okay, everything is good. It's adding sound.
Okay, monitoring and oversight. If you could look at the three responsibilities that you said you would do. And this is specifically a recommendation. You're not doing it because it's a recommendation, but we can use it as evidence.
I think we've done all three of these things.
Yeah, I agree.
It's easy from board meetings, evidence, knowledgeable about the progress. We appreciate the updates on the on status and estimated dates and all that. And then identify areas of concern and plot areas of growth. We compared them to prior strategic goals. We had some respectful conversation about modifying or providing feedback or kicking back.
Hey, Todd, Terry, or Brad, I'm going to ask you to respond to the next one. Educational quality.
Before we get to, okay, so I do want to point out too, I think something which is not far the goals here. But y'all have stayed at the correct level with the strategic plan. And that's important too. I mean, the boards, the board has a less technical role in strategic plan than a lot of the other partners in this. It is at the 30,000 feet level, and I think y'all have done that and having the the reports given without getting, you know, meddling into the into the operations. You deserve credit for that because that's proper board governance.
Well, and you noticed the board goal is not strategic planning, it's monitoring and oversight. That's what number three is. That was just the example that you concentrated on. So goal four is educational quality and student success. And Terry, Brad, or Todd, would you guys?
Every meeting.
Pardon me?
We do that at every meeting.
Great.
We get staff reports and and their comments on it and applause.
Okay, I'm going to give a little tiny criticism. It's not really a criticism, but a plead. Sometimes you guys, the reports are so impressive to me that you hear from from the president about everything that's going on and from college personnel about the accomplishments of the college. And sometimes you don't say anything. And it would be so, I mean, you you're, you do sometimes, but it really is the time for you to go ahead, even if it's repetitious. Because it's, they're so good.
And I don't mean to pick on y'all as a board, but I will on this one. Like, you had two folks just get up there and talk about enrollment at the beginning of your last board meeting with a tremendous report. I mean, with a lot of information. And 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 I know, having been a trustee in the college, they put a lot of their heart into that and to get some feedback afterwards. And Mike, you said a nice comment, but then even asking a question, I mean, I was intrigued by your letters to the GED students. I just thought that was a great idea. Like, it just asking, hey, how did who, how did that come about? How are we measuring success? They love that. I mean, it's it's only good for you as a board. It's also, it it shows that the work that they're doing is being valued. So just be mindful of that. I know. Let's face it, this has been, y'all been through a rough, rough time this board. I mean, with the interactions and so forth and and that type of thing. But but I think that's a unifier. I mean, we're all for students who are all success. We're all for the enrollment going up. We're all for offering opportunities for students who the GED who maybe didn't think well of themselves to, I mean, that was just, I just like, that's just a nice thing, you know. Why isn't someone saying that? But 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 when when you have the college staff especially, you know, Nick needs some pats on the back too. But college staff especially, when they're giving report, just asking them positive questions and maybe a little bit, not editorializing, just more details about, hey, tell us more about that, Todd.
You know, Ken, I hear you. Very challenging though. Because as you're sitting, listening to that, you're thinking, well, gosh, where would we be if we hadn't intentionally undercut ourselves? We had all those, you know, votes of no confidence. If we hadn't shot ourselves in the foot and self-reported Civil Rights Act that
Civil rights a- a- egregious of some sort or whatever. Christie's minion was trying to tell us, Mr. Stewart, and then we end up with where we're at now, how it's morphed to where we're at. They look at where if these people hadn't stood up there four years ago and started screaming after the election, where would our enrollment really be? So it's hard for me to get overly enthusiastic that we're trying to get back to the waterline. And actually trying to show a positive trend on enrollment, when it was, we self-destructed, we we manufactured a crisis, we created this crisis. And then people have taken advantage of it, and then it's it's put us to where now we're in scramble mode, we're doing all this stuff just to try to. Get back to the waterline, well, gosh, I never would see this now, sort of like post-COVID, take all the shots, and then now here we are now, we have. We we shouldn't, we shouldn't be this desperate to see an increase in enrollment, we should have already been there years ago, we've done a lot of things, we spent money, we did good things. Parker, et cetera, and 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 so, yeah, it's nice, it it's an improvement. But we've been basically held under the thumb for the last couple of years. And and we're we're per- we're performance working right now, you know, it's like.
But but Todd, the people, the team here, a lot of them have been through that too, and. And there's stress, and so we need to encourage people. About all the positive things that are happening, because we are where we are, we're and we're going up and up and up and up. And we have been for a while, and so we need to recognize that, I think.
Todd, maybe that's not an example that you can live with, so just, if you could just hear the message of. Where you can, we don't want you to be disingenuous at all, but where you can, certainly none of you can. Say that the reports on how well the nursing students did in passing the NCLEX exam. Could be bad, right, or could be a problem, so pick the ones where you can. With good conscience, give a compliment, that's all we're saying is is give a compliment.
Not only a compliment, just a question, you know, about about how, tell us more about this, or, you know, why do you think it is where you succeeded at this level? Um that that type of thing, to get a little bit more detail on it.
And we're ready to move on to next.
Oh, financial responsibility.
Identify areas of concern. Is is there any workshop we, the board has for areas of concern? I feel like a couple of have trickled, and I'm just wondering if there's any.
I I was just interpreting that as as we went along and we asked questions during the board reports, is it, what is it that you? Uh really intended there?
Yes, no, that is, because you definitely have, if you have concerns of a trustee about other things, you you have your route. To the board chair, the president, to see about getting items on the agenda or hearing a a report on something. You you have avenues to do that, but what we're talking about in here are when you hear presentations. And you have the questions that you have about areas that you'd like more information on. Or comments on things that you are impressed with, just reactions to the presentations.
Um is is there any specific to this free speech and expression and um decisions regarding maybe have class schedules or anything? Like, is there any interest in workshops of how how are. Classes chosen or or all of a sudden stopped or?
My my only comment on this block is line number three, I think we addressed that. At the uh last board meeting, you were gonna come back with our report and. A sample, et cetera, and see where we are at that point, because that is a key thing that the the community is interested in.
Hey Greg, you know, it it is, I've mentioned before, and probably mentioned my slides here, you know. Um it it is important for the board to to know about the college, and the biggest self-discipline is to get information and not to act on it. It's to it's to make us better policymakers, it's not to solve a problem. But um it is appropriate for a if if the board wants a workshop from the academic um vice president on how courses are sunsetted. And how new courses are developed, um you know, that's that's an appropriate, that's an appropriate board workshop. Now, the the self-discipline comes in, then we don't say, well, I think you should add this course or delete this course or that type of thing. Here, how that that process works, I think it's a it's a very good thing for the board to 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 learn those type of things. Or or how programs are sunsetted, because the more structure you have, the metrics you have, the easier it is to what to vote on uh eliminating a program.
I personally just helping the board understand how some courses are just straight up canceled when they seem popular. And and in the context of free speech and expression, this is, how is it not based off the individuals? But data-driven decisions regarding course loads, I think.
Those are good questions to ask.
That's an excellent question.
And so like, how how can we have a professor speak freely without having their courses canceled for the next semester? Or, you know, just like, how 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 and and in in development of policy of a free speech and expressions type of environment.
Okay, and.
Kind of understanding, how are the decisions made?
And and I'll I'll say two things that are a little bit disconnected, but cover what your concerns are. One is, in the meeting, the last board meeting, we talked about you'd split the topic of free speech really into two ways. And my understanding from a discussion we had last year is academic freedom is freedom of. The instructors to do what they want to do. And and then freedom of speech is how speech occurs on campus, right? So those are two topics, and should that second one, should this goal not uh underruled responsibilities? Uh be updated to split, to reflect that split. So that we can monitor both. And I'm looking to you guys.
Yeah, these are, you guys wrote these.
I I just feel, I just feel like the board, I just feel like the board's getting left behind on this, because there's been uh presentations to. I think mainly faculty and staff, but they're they weren't recorded and and I don't know, no board member attended or anything, so we're just maybe. Not.
Well, we have, and I agree, I'm concerned about, I thought this was gonna occur sometime before now, the the free speech and academic freedom. Um so, but we've talked about, we would do that at the next board meeting, and so I had the one topic there.
So in your update and your assessment, you're saying this is an area where you need more work, and at your last board meeting, you said you would hear. At the next uh meeting, you would hear enough, no, at the fall, when the Senate meets again, you would hear the update. And that's, and the board definitely should hear.
And and then on the other thing, issue you brought up, can we have a presentation, a report on the process? You use to.
I don't want it in a regular board. Let's have it just target to be an hour and, you know, just have a workshop on that.
Well, okay.
And then if no one is. They don't have to participate, our board meetings are.
So so we're we're set up for another ACCT meeting? Why not just do it in that?
Well, it needs to be done, we can figure the mechanics later, but.
But it needs to be done, so.
How are data driven?
Okay.
They're not, they're not even knowledgeable on that, it's it's the administration who's making and making the decision, they're the ones who's doing it. So they should be able to talk to them.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, and Greg, I, the the only thing I would ask is that, let's ask our questions in without the conclusion already in our questions, okay? That's in fairness, because there are so many factors within coursework, I mean, you you've heard your president talk about alignment with the four-year programs. Well, that dictates a lot of times what the underlying forces are, it's it's not a matter of choice here, if we want that student transfer to these uh four-year schools. Then we have to offer a certain coursework, and if they if they decide to sunset a course in something, then we have to sunset the same course. We want to have the alignment with the with the four years, so I I I don't want to get into it, but I'm just saying, there's so many decisions with with this, the factors that come into this. And that, but that's where we should be open to saying, here, tell us all these factors, tell all these things are done, and I think when you hear it, you're gonna find that. Hopefully, I I would certainly certainly assume so, that it's it's it is based on on those types of factors and and on. Let's stop teaching this type of thing, because I don't like this course.
So that's, so that's great, because in your other ones, you said you were doing pretty well, you had met him, in this one, you you've just assessed that you need. To continue what you already asked for and then add another section, okay? So we ready to move on to financial responsibility? And if you could look at your board responsibilities on there.
I'll do a good job of this here.
And I think we need to add one thing, I don't know, Sarah's here, Audrey is back there in the back.
Sorry, walk out, she walked back in.
I do want to acknowledge the fact that the board members also. All met with Sarah ahead of time and reviewed it and asked questions, and we were able to get the board, the budget through. In a timely fashion, so everybody worked hard, last year there were some hiccups, because the process wasn't really well-defined. And then Sarah went in and I came up, and I assume President Swain got involved, and they came up with a better process. And everybody got involved, and the issues were pretty much resolved before the board meetings.
Is that, that's in the draft?
Yeah, it's in the recommendations, what, my question is here, are you saying you want to commit to um meeting, individual meetings? You want that to be one of board responsibilities, or you're just gonna say that in the, when you do your self-evaluation?
Right, right. I just want to make sure we get credit for that.
Yeah, it's in, it's in our responses, but but in your self-evaluation, you'll want to remember it too, okay?
Just have a question, I was reading the. Accreditation responses, it said in there that there is a a staff member. Regarding the budget for this year, is there, because I remember being informed of it in the individual conversations, but then I was. Never heard of it at the actual, when the budget passed, is there a staff administrator specific to athletic grades? Or not, is the?
That's one that I addressed, it was in my report, that we're hiring that position, it is open, searching for student success. It's in the, it's in the budget, that was one of the new positions that is funded.
So you have a position open and you're interviewing and that type of thing.
New positions that were funded.
That's the one.
There were, there were two new positions funded in the budget, and they were marked in the board packet as. That included in the cost of the new things that we're doing this year was the addition of two positions for athletics, one a full-time coach for. Soccer and the other for student success advisor, and they were noted as such on uh in the report.
There were two coaching positions that were listed, did we have someone leave, that was an existing position, needs to be refilled.
Well, we're talking about new positions.
That's what I'm asking, but on the website, we had two coaching positions, assistant coaches that were being listed. One looked like the soccer position, and she's talking about this, we had another assistant coach position.
Athletic trainer and uh assistant volleyball coach that I've seen her.
Volleyball coach, we're filling a position that somebody left.
Trustee Van Dujie, um the, what we did last year was created one full-time, the only sport that didn't have a full-time assistant coach. Was men's and women's soccer, last year we added one full-time assistant coach and one part-time assistant coach. This year, we added the second full-time assistant coach, every athletics team has a budgeted full-time and a budgeted. Full-time, full-time uh head coach and assistant coach, sorry.
You know, I understand, we had the golf assistant coach, and we had the third wrestling coach.
Going to board effectiveness? Okay, since the board effectiveness, as you read. Um we did put in here when you wrote how you would demonstrate this, that you would. Do three pre-board meeting visitations, like where you maybe. Met at a program and we and toured the program or, you know, something like that, or one of your other sites. That hasn't happened to my knowledge, and, oh, it has?
No, not yet.
Okay, and I don't know if it's still one that as your goals, because you said it's goal number five. I mean, as specific activity number five and as uh board responsibility, so I don't know if that's. Still important to you, if you want to change it to one, if you've, if it's realistic.
And some of these things are aspirational, they're not, you know, you're.
I'd say I've been here as well, I haven't been to Sandpoint.
What's that?
I'd say uh. Been here before you, and haven't been to Sandpoint.
I think that's why you guys wrote this, you liked the idea of seeing every place where you are a board for, that was terrible English, so. Sorry, but um seeing all your facilities and really having a a look at. Your programs that are uh unique, and so you did write this, but I just want you to assess yourselves. This is halfway through, and you haven't done one yet, is it important to you, is that something you want the president to work on? Um you have August, September, October, and November to do that?
You can leave, I don't know, get two of them.
I, this is, when we're talking about consensus, do, how how many people want to do some pre-board meetings?
When you say pre-board, that was my question, do you mean actually on the day, or you mean?
Like meet a half hour early at Sandpoint and tour the Sandpoint facility or?
A lot of times they've had board meetings at Sand.
Yeah, and do the board, yeah, you'd stay there to do the board meeting, you wouldn't travel back, because that would mean too much time.
We've done Routh Room, we've done Sandpoint, we've been down at the Tribe for a meeting.
I was saying like, four years ago, there was basically not a lot of attention, other than the main focus, like a lot of them. Had even seen the president a year or two, yeah, so just.
It's kind of cool for those communities when they know that the board's meeting there.
That people care about them.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You work that, right? Yeah, well, I'll I'll make a commitment to work with the president on that, is that all right with you guys?
Sure, well, I mean, basically what that's kind of translating is, if I'm going up to Sandpoint, I'm not gonna want to drive to Sandpoint for an hour and then drive back down, so.
You're doing this.
You're gonna have to.
And we've talked about doing that, but it hasn't, it hasn't gotten done, so maybe it's time now to get it done.
I've never met with the tribe, but it seems.
Sorry, I thought you were changing, but. Sorry, are you done?
Done now.
Okay, Todd?
Uh Greg's point, uh that was a good one, um can just mention that that these are aspirational. Because otherwise, number three would be a challenge, I think, because I know uh where I've been on this board a while. And I certainly have not averaged one conference per academic year, I have about one every other two or so. And that was partly because we, we generally only went to the annual conferences, and generally we waited till they were here on the West Coast, because we have the year in the past.
Yeah. I didn't think you guys were saying these were aspirational, I thought you were making commitments.
Asking, if they're aspirational, I'm fine with that, if they're not, I think that should be struck, I think, not everybody can accommodate that, now maybe. I think, you know, if we had, there's been. There's been different uh groups of folks on the board, sometimes group maybe a little bit older, more mature. Have the wherewithal and interest to to travel more and do these conferences, there are times where others can, I know I have to be very selective, or have had to, as I, you know. Had my military duty or my my business, so it's not always convenient to do these things.
Feel like that needs to be adjusted, because it's kind of ACCD conference or Boise. Education week, so it's kind of, I feel like you've done Boise quite regularly, but not always ACCD.
Yeah, Boise's almost been every year.
Yeah, there's just been a cap, so I think this needs to.
You hear from conference to something that leaves it open to count.
External travel activity.
Some events involving the college.
On behalf of the college or something.
Yeah, I think this, that's why you do the update, because you are making these commitments to each other, really, you're the ones who wrote them, and you're making. The commitments to each other as a board and it's not like, you know, there's any punishment if you don't, but you are. You're doing such a good job. You wanna, you wanna change it if you're not, if you don't think it's a good idea. Okay, so you'll send us the, I mean, it's not so much for us, but we'll keep the updated. Terry?
Actually, the pre-board meetings.
Yeah.
I think um it's great to do that. I just, if we're going to invest the time and the effort to go to whatever venue that we're talking about. I'd like enough time to really have a very good in-depth tour. And I just go up there and just kind of walk and wave, you know, here's the thought that doesn't really interest me very much, but getting to know a little bit about the people and actually about what each one of them does. Maybe they could actually be in the recurring, the student success, the recurring reports, things like that. When we go there, so it make it more meaningful for those meetings if that is interesting to anybody.
Do you remember when we met for the training out at the training center? Parker and they toured it and they talked about all the different programs that they have there. I thought that's kind of what you were talking about or not?
Do you not think I went there? I tended to meeting out there, but we didn't do any, we didn't go anywhere.
You might not have gotten there in time for the, for the.
That's, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a pre like monthly board meeting, but just like, but like, we might change that pre-board meeting, just like. Pre-meeting, you know, or pre-activity.
Well, but I think you need to clarify too that the board meeting will be held there too. Right? If it's a pre-board meeting, the board meeting is held there too. Right?
We have had extensive reports from like Vicki Isaacson came in and talked about. Education and workforce training center. Colby has talked about it. Down from Sandpoint and talk.
This is.
Or this is going up there. So we have informed the board about.
Oh, yeah.
But it does make a difference. Doesn't just also mean those campuses means this campus. And going over to your health area. I mean, you can get a fifteen minute dissertation on that, on that.
Absolutely.
There's the mannequin type of stuff that they use for all the, the real life mannequin, you know, thing. And he's very enthusiastic about telling about it. And you could go to the tour. Obviously, yeah, I mean, just those types of things are, are, you're right. You can do that before a board meeting.
So do you want to clarify that the board meeting would be held then at the same facility? So if it's something here, you would have the board meeting here and if it's out at.
Let's just add a sixth one to have some offsite.
What's that?
Let's just, let's just have a six.
We just, we can change five to make it offsite, offsite visits to those places.
I guess we, as long as it says onsite and offsite too. Because I, when I read five, I didn't necessarily read how Ken just came said, you know, just on the main campus here too.
Okay, so.
I, I know that's under board effectiveness. It's not a goal, but I have to compliment y'all. Your board attendance at board meetings was phenomenal compared to other boards. I mean, y'all really do attend your board meetings.
Are we okay moving to the next one? Well, six A mutually agree upon votes for the president. Great job. Uh using them now in the evaluation, so. Anything anybody needs to say about that one?
To the credit of those groups, I think it appears that this is the first time it's happened in a long time. That we actually follow the policy, everything. I don't know how far back that goes where it's where you find the topic that was.
You shouldn't remember to say that to NWCCU too.
I'm not sure how much you want to brag about.
Yeah, we need to brag about some things.
It's interesting how little interest they had in so many things over the decades that others were on this board and now suddenly some of these things have come under their scrutiny. And that we've been tasked to do many things that at least my first eight years, I won't even suggest through a link that or talked about.
In here? Are you talking about these things?
Just in general, but yeah, some of that too. You were talking about things that maybe have never been done. Policies that weren't followed, policies that weren't updated. The way things were done, so.
The, there's a lack of.
Level of scrutiny. Heightened level of scrutiny.
Well, there's no doubt there is a height level. I mean, governance is an issue that all accreditation authorities are looking at a lot more than they used to. There's no doubt about that.
And I'm, I'm going from my background, you know, I've redesigned home companies and that type of thing facilitated that. And when I came on board as a trustee, I began to look like some things hadn't been done for a long time. And so, you know, we worked with Terry and President Swain and when we went through a lot of those policies, those were pretty old. And so I've been impressed by the policies getting updated, the communications processes where we have the reports now. On a, on every board meeting and so we have that on a schedule. And then President Swain has gone in and worked on personnel policies and updated some of those processes. Which were things that I had heard about when I was a candidate that needed to be done. And some of those things are getting done too. So there's. A lot of good things that are getting done. Kind of an overhaul.
Yes, I move that term.
Okay. So six B under the same, it's still under key, key factors that you're gonna address. And this is respecting the delegate and then respect the authority that has been allocated. And if you look at your responsibilities.
Now, on one, isn't that what we got last week from the president? Before we did the performance reviews, you were talking about something else.
Now, this is regular.
This is like. Oh, yeah, okay. This is recurring reports. Again, I think that's something that. We could not find any evidence that it had happened. So we had to start from scratch with what we're gonna report on. And this is something it's, and Suzie and Kristen helped prepare it. We did a schedule which we're sending to the accreditation authority and all the trainings that Debbie and I participated in, but also all your board reports. We consider those trainings that when you get a report of the workforce and that type of things, we have a listing of those at the board meeting. And then the conferences that you all attended this past year, we document those in there. I'm not sure if we had the visits to Boise though. We probably need to.
Probably didn't put that in there. Thank you.
We need to add that. It's a, it's a, it's a working process, progress with us right now. So. I don't know. Kristen, can you pop it up there? The, the recurring reports. Ken Wardiski did get that public. We haven't shared that with forty of.
I don't think I can bring it up on the screen.
It's just a.
She, she has this on her desktop. I don't know.
She says it can't. Pressing, maybe we'll try it on the animation, but there is a, we do have a website up now.
Pass it around.
I think Greg, you requested that. Yeah. And there'll be a tab at the bottom. So by here, so. You can look at all the reports and one that. Tab back and forth between them. Yeah, I'm a cheapskate. I doubled in paper. That's. So don't read the backside. That's not.
Are you okay moving to the next topic? Okay.
Trying to save a tree every once in a while.
Six C is about the policies. The updating of the policies and look at your responsibilities there.
Renewable resources. And this is one where the NWCCU has, has called us out a couple of times as this is a highlight. So I think. Don't shoot yourselves in the foot and say this is an area of improvement. This is really, they've noted that we probably have the most updated policies of any college in the country, right? Debbie, Debbie and Terry and Mike, great job at the policies.
Okay.
You say this is good.
Oh, yeah.
Each one of us spent, was it each one of us or all together? We spent three hundred hours.
It's a lot of time.
Yeah, a lot of time working on this.
Okay, so we're on six D. And that's your performance review. You're in the process right now. Just, and you've adhered to your policy. Well, no, this is, I'm sorry, this is your periodic review and that you'll do in a few months. Okay?
There's really nothing to put on here except that you have goals. Well, there's, there's.
That wasn't one.
We got some time left before we even sort of just jump to sixty, I guess.
We've already done. One set of goals, right?
For the board.
The board, right.
Yeah, this, this set that you're talking about right now. Yeah, you'll, usually the process a board uses is when they do their evaluation. Then they either revise their goals and add to them or set new goals for the next year. Most board goals and most, most CEO goals are not usually accomplishable within one year. They usually.
They're ongoing.
Longer than that. Yeah. So you might revise them, but you wouldn't completely throw them out usually.
Same, so six D and six E, six E we're doing right now.
Right, this is your mid-year assessment of how you're doing on your board goals. And then updating them, which we received a few updates and then you'll evaluate yourselves on them as a part of your evaluation process. Okay? So is everybody okay going to six F?
Yes.
Okay, cultivate a strong positive president board relationship that promotes the success of NIC students in the community college. Can you look at? The activities and the board responsibilities here and talk about it? Is there anything you want to add or anything that, remember your goal as a strong positive board president? Revision, so, but if. Five, was that something that you wanted to say or you?
Well, I was looking at this list and I guess later we just talked about them. I know I was at a meeting or two, but I don't see myself anywhere in this list here. You know, a couple of times, just to group and bribe the audience.
But that list of, you're talking about the list that's going around. I'm sorry, I'm, are we okay with six F then? Because we'll conclude this section of that. Okay, okay. All right. And that was your review. We'll update and turn back out to the board with some revisions and. Good, thanks Suzie for taking notes on that. Sure, okay. Okay, so we're ready to go to the policies. And the policies are in your packet. We're gonna get to that. Yeah, we're on the policies first. That's our three fifteen.
I like even big of the accreditation report, so we have some time there.
Yeah, the, these policies were the policies specifically mentioned by NWCCU. In their recommendations and that's why we pulled them out. Okay? So the first one, I think in your, in your packet is two oh one oh three. That talks about your minutes and. I mean, your meetings and your order of business, your special move, executive session. Is that the one you have first?
Yeah, oh, two.
And it. It talks about following that you are going to. Follow Robert's rules as a guideline in all cases to which they are applicable. You don't have that one? Two oh one oh three.
I just gave it to them.
Okay. And that you'll review your policies. You can write the greatest policies in the world and if you don't know them and use them. And live by them, then it doesn't matter. So one of the things that. I appreciate when you do especially is sometimes when you're making a comment at a, at a board meeting. You will actually point to policy. I've, I've heard several of you do that and I think it's great. Because it shows that you not only revise your policy, but that you, you understand them and that, that you're using them to inform your actions. Okay? So that's, that's just two point oh one oh three. Board roles and responsibilities oh two. If you could look at that one for just a minute. I'm just gonna remind you of a couple of things when we made all of the changes to this. This was changed extensively through the review process. And if you remember, there were, there were a lot of policies that, I mean, a lot of roles and responsibilities listed. But we organized them through the revision process and we actually. I quoted the statute for those that were statutory, statutorily mandated. Okay? So you see those, you see where you have in D, the ones that are your policy requirements that you require of yourself. And then you delineated the list of duties of your board officers in this policy. And then you, this is where you wrote your standards of good practice. All of the statutory requirements and your policy requirements should lead to the standards of good practice. Okay? And if you have any question about whether something is within your purview. Or what we should be doing, then there's the policy that you should go through to, to validate. Okay? Are we okay moving to the next one? So the next policy is board ethics. This was specifically mentioned also, and this is two oh one. Well, let's do ten first because that was along with oh three, the board conduct. So this is the one where you did some quite a bit of revision too on your guidelines for conduct and this is two point oh one one oh. Okay, and you, you talk about general guidelines for conduct, how you are going to interact with the college personnel. What your communication protocols are. And this is where you actually wrote up your conflict of interest policy. So if there's anything that. Even appears to be a conflict of interest, you would look at this section of two point oh one oh ten and. And check yourself and check if you have, if you need legal advice on it with your attorney. This one is the one that has trustee use of facilities and then complaints regarding individual board members. And it also has the potential actions that you can take for trustees violating any policy. Okay? On this, when you added the affirmation, you added it to two policies. And you said that annually you would reaffirm yourselves as trustees, as what you believe and what you will do. As a North Idaho College trustee. You affirm that you'll work and support the interest of NIC, et cetera. This is also in your new trustee orientation packet, the, the guidelines for the orientation. And when the orientation is concluded, at the next board meeting, the new trustee affirms this also. And then annually, the whole board reaffirms their commitment to these responsibilities that the trustee. So you'll want to do that. Every year, you'll want to make sure that, yeah, yeah, so at your organizational meeting, you, you all reaffirm, you all.
Reaffirm as a. We will reaffirm as a.
And then finally, the two point oh one twelve, this one was new, but it was, it had been included in another policy, but you guys felt that it was important enough to pull out on its own and you use the code of ethics that you revised it a little bit, but you used the code of S, uh, model code of ethics from A C C T to develop this. And these are the ethics that you all agreed to live by. Okay? Does anybody want to say anything about any of these policies?
Okay. I don't want to pat ourselves on the back, but I think we did a really good job.
Yes, you did.
And not only you, other colleges have looked at your revised qualities and used them. Okay, um, I agree.
Yeah, right.
The community college business, that's the no mod side.
And we're supposed to take a quick break at three forty-five. So should we take one right now?
We want to just work through because we're behind already.
Okay, we can do that.
Let's go a little way.
The accreditation report could be briefer than, because I already gave a lot of it. But um, let me go through the, the best practices for a high performing board. These are things that folks, you know, Todd, you've heard this a bunch of times. Okay? So these are not anything new, especially those if you've been on for a while, I've seen these, but as I mentioned, I'm a C P A. Every two years I have to say, take the same ethics course I've taken for thirty some years now. Because it's important to, to be reminded of a proper board governance. So, so are we ready for the, the few slides? This is, I think we have five slides. We keep it very short here.
And I would just ask that even though you've seen this a bunch of times, if you do a self-evaluation while you're looking at it, just how you're doing so far on on living by these best practices.
No, there's our picture. Let's go to the next one. And again, the board's power comes back against a team. You have no individual power as a trustee. And it's the paradox of the hierarchy of the partnership. What that we mean by that is that you are the, the the governing body, the hire the president, you have one employee in the president, but then you work as a team together to advance the college. Um, and that's the paradox of the hierarchy. You, you, you are a higher authority than the president. As you're the board of trustees, you hire the president, you set policies, but you work as, as, as a team. Next. The, the board has, has to set that, the tone, has to direct through policies. And again, you all have done an outstanding job with your policies, your oversight monitoring. And I think in, in even the time that I followed your college, the improvement in the monitoring reports has increased tremendously. I mean, whether it's the reports at the board meeting, the president's reports, the governor's reports that you're given on things. Um, your, your, and that's an important responsibility that, that a board has is to make sure that they know what's happening at the college. Again, not to act on everything, but to know what's happening. Powerfully delegate to your president and, and to support your president, to protect the resources and have those fiduciary responsibilities, which actually the duty of care, which Debbie embedded into our agenda today on the bottom of your first page of the agenda. The president's job is the administration, the execution of policies and the day-to-day operations of the, of the school. He is the, the, the face of the school to the outside. He speaks on behalf of the school. The chair speaks on behalf of the board. And these are our responsibilities in setting the policy. Again, you, you govern as a board uh, that, there's no individual power or authority as a trustee. We have none. It's only our work together in the boardroom as a board. Uh, we try to discourage partisan politics. We really try to stay, let's focus on what's best for community colleges and what's best for our community college students. And looking at the, the public, the trust, um, you know, I know you all represent individual districts, but you're supposed to look out what's best for the overall well-being. You don't say, gosh, well, standpoint's not in my district. I'm not going to give any resources there. I'm going to vote against that. Uh, that would be improper. Um, you're supposed to say, hey, we're serving that community too. We're supposed to look at the entire district from that viewpoint, not the individual viewpoint of what area you represent. And I can tell you, colleges have had national reputation very badly. Houston, for example, which she's worked with, where they, they have this, this, this culture there where their, their trustees get elected from district and they feel they have to bring home the bacon to their district. Um, that's terrible board governance. They're, we're supposed to look out what is best for all the citizens of our district and to make the decisions that are best for them. Yes, Mike.
Right, but here you're selected, elected from a district so that the whole, not everybody comes from one area. But we're voted for across the whole one district, right? So.
But he's saying there's five, five districts the N I C serves.
Right, yeah, but it isn't like we're trying to find the voters. I'm the zone five. We don't care about the voters.
And that's, that's all of them. And I'm not saying without the good system or bad, I'm just saying, e- e- even though you live in a district, you're not, you're supposed to look at the better. And you do. Y'all have always done a very good job at that. Setting this college's strategic direction, deploying, evaluating, support the CEO. Hey, we've checked in those box. Set realistic goals, which you've done. Ensure the financial health of the, of the college, create a positive climate. That's an area probably, um, maybe we need to improve a little bit on. Um, and monitor the institutional's performance. I think y'all do a good, good job at, at, at that. And being an ambassador for the college, attending your events and attending your board meeting, you're excellent at attending board meetings, um, from what I understand too, five U N graduation. You know, there's going to be things obviously that come up in our lives where we can't attend everything, but y'all certainly are committed to uh, North Idaho College with no, no, no doubt about that. Then the next one. So this is, I think it's almost my final slide here. Um, it, it's, it's, this, this gives the, the, what does a board do? And we are focusing on the board. We have slides for the president too, but those of, this is of our accreditation is really focused on boarding governance. So I really stayed with the board slides because there's a lot of slides telling what the president to do and not do. But uh, we're supposed to stay focused on the big picture, delegate powerfully to the, to the, to the president. Stay at the bigger picture, resist the temptation. And that's the thing. And, and I can tell you, I'm a problem solver. You give me a problem, I like to solve it. Uh, when I was on the board, that was the biggest thing is hearing things that you're not supposed to act on, but just to make you better policymakers and increase your knowledge of, of the, of the college. Uh, and make sure your, 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 um, your president is following the policies of those colleges. That's where we, we set the boundaries. And then we monitor for accountability, which again, um, y'all do a very good job as far as um, Sarah, Sarah, if she's still back there, she, she makes sure that you're fully aware of the, um, uh, financial status of the college. I think your president does a good job in also telling you the bad news of the college. You know, the, what's, what's not going right here, um, and getting that message out. We did have what we considered a little hiccup earlier this year, but then he got um, with all the board members to let you know, um, uh, that situation. So I think that's, that's important. Nothing's going to be perfect. And I think that's it, right? Yes. Okay. So that's our refresher course on board governance. And so, um, we could add that to something that, that we've have, have taken care of.
And we already did the general discussion of accreditation, so we can move right into Steve, right?
Well, um, no, I do want to talk about.
Because we're going to come back to the recommendations.
Five, seven and ten.
We're going to talk about the the recommendation.
Okay. Maybe from, right before we go on break, the, the general thing that's, um, Stephen, I would appreciate this because I was confused by this. I'm thinking, well, what's, what are we trying to achieve with what, with the commission? Um, obviously, back to full status is the, is the ideal thing. Uh, but there's different statuses that we, that we have. We're on show cause now. And the next one up with pre-probation.
Down, down is probation.
Okay. And there's, when you say down, I say up. It's improving. Show cause, improve to probation, turn the temperature.
And then you improve to, uh, warning and then you approve of, of, of. That's because you're a glass half full guy.
We found that out, right?
That you could put down withdraw. The show.
And I can tell you this. Debbie and I and Steve have talked about this. Um, we're going to do all we can as in, in our conversations, that we're just one voice, but we're advocates for you because we've seen the progress has been made to, to, you know, say that, um, we really want to see a movement in the, in the status. And, and the upward direction, as I would call it, um, whether it be probation or, or warning, and probably you're not going to get two statuses changed at one time, but, but, but I think that's a realistic expectation to move from, from show pause to probation um, based on the work that we did. And, and I just want to publicly say that we're going to advocate for that. Okay? We've got to advocate better than that, but you know. Just want to mention that's.
Yeah, so for the benefit of the, the audience that may or may not be aware, what the next meeting is, uh, you said October eighteen and fifteenth. And what generally happens is, and I don't think I'm stealing your thunder again, uh, but, uh, is that September second, they're documenting Debbie and Ken all of our progress.
And Steve.
And Steve. The board's input.
And the board's input. And so that this is being communicated because what we've run into before is that sometimes we're making progress and it wasn't communicated to various sections of N W C C U. So it was decided that the way to fix that is to document all this, spend a lot of time and then, uh, communicate it with them on a routine basis. September second is the deadline. Then what happens is that report goes in and it kind of becomes what concrete.
Good way to describe it.
Yeah, because then when they show up, they will have already written their report and all they do is say.
Is what. Does it match?
And they value.
They want to confirm.
Yeah.
And triangulate the, what was in the report is what they're seeing on the ground.
Right. And then, so the next step is generally in two to three weeks. So around the first of November, they would come in and actually deliver a report. Good.
Thirty days.
No, no, this is different. Seven, seven.
Seven, seven.
They have to, they have to give us within seven days after the visit, they give us a draft. We have seven days to respond to the draft. And then they have seven days to, to give us the final. And then we have ten days to submit something, but those comments would go to the full commission, not to the, um, not to the visiting.
And this commission is a bunch, a, a group of educators, like it was thirty, right? Thirty from across the western United States.
But the team visiting is a small team. How many people?
Four or five. Yeah. Right. And they will interview, as they have in the past, the various board meetings, uh, members and other people who's with information on the ground at the college.
It's not across the whole states. It's just N W C C U member participants. So you're just pulling from Oregon and Seattle. They're.
Yeah, they do not matter. You can talk. We did, at least one member from Alaska.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was the.
Alaska.
That was the relations from the prior administration.
So the seven, 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 in that seven, when you have responses, is it correction of errors in fact or is?
Seven is the correction of errors.
So that's, that's important to know because you, they won't change what they've written, but they will correct errors if they're wrong.
It's like names are wrong or dates are wrong or something like that. So they'll fix that, give it back to us. Some needs to get back to us and then. And since we have members here, I think it's important to say that, you know, we, we may seem, give the impression that we're just trying to conform with the checklist, which is not the case. We're trying to observe the good principles of good governance of the community college that are recognized nationally and documenting them here at N I C. So I, I, I don't want to, you know, we're, we're not, we're just not studying for the test, although there is a test. Uh, we're studying so we can enhance our knowledge of the topic. In this case, we're, we're doing the right thing in, 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 in making sure that the principles of good governance are being observed. So I, 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 and, and as a result of that, we're going to pass the test. And then Mike, I think next to, so seven, 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 ten. And then, um, in, end of January, early February, that all feeds to the commission. And we will, we will be going to the commission and, and presenting. And so many of what you just went over, like in your board goals and so because most of you guys are related to governance, you, you are going to be part of that report, um, a lot of the accomplishments that you have. I will give you a warning because we've had this today, even when, um, a lot of the things are duplicative. Uh, because they were mentioned in a recommendation last year and a recommendation this year. So I think we have to kind of maybe point that out to you. You may say, gosh, why are just a big, bigger explanation here? Well, it's, there's not going to be a bigger explanation if we already explained it in another section. We're going to be saying, as in our response to recommendation ten and spring of twenty twenty-three, this here is the, you know, and so it may just be a paragraph or something that you say is, gosh, that needs a lot more documentation. Well, the documentation's already in another recommendation response.
And we're going to go through the recommendations and we'll point that out to you.
We're confused. Let's beef that up. We tell, no, we have.
I kept telling, well, we have that in this recommendation.
That format.
The, the N W.
But I just want to let you, because it is kind of confusing, at least it was to me.
So we're ready. We're, we need that you to do yours, Steve, so you have time. And this is the compliance with the N W C C U's mandate for, uh, the college to create a teach-out agreement and then with the hope that this never has to be implemented because we resolve accreditation issues and.
I'm going to, and I repeat that again, just because we have folks.
So the hope, this has to be, and it is a mandate and it has to be done. But if you would think of it in terms of like emergency planning, you have to plan for everything, but you hope you don't have to implement. You never have an active shooter on.
In March, they, uh, N W C, as a result of our February second meeting with the commission, they produced a re- report and a plan. And in that, it said by the thirty-first of August, we have to do a teach-out agreement. It doesn't say we're going to implement it. It just said they're going to have to do a teach-out agreement. So this is responding to that requirement. So don't, nobody, nobody go crazy.
Yeah.
We're not going to teach out. We're, but we have to comply. And, and Steve will talk about the, the actual worst case scenario is not submitting something. Um, and there's, he'll, he'll cover that, but.
Okay, can I say something? I'll just reinforce it using an analogy. If your F four is shot down, you probably want a parachute without holes in it. And they require you to go when you go up to have a parachute. But it doesn't mean you want to jump out unless you absolutely have.
Yeah, but I have to have confidence in the guy that attacked the sheet.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, anyway, this, uh, yeah. So the, we are continuing making progress. Everybody is working hard to make progress. And, uh, you're documenting it. And so we need to lower the risk to zero. We need that parachute.
I want to give one more cover to Steve before he gives his presentation. Both teach-outs have become, uh, are done with the college that's in financial distress. And so the college is, is closing because they, they just can't pay their bills. Um, this really is uncharted territory. To come up with a plan that no one else, you know, had, has the same circumstances is very difficult. You can't say, is this the usual, what they do or the usual thing that they would accept? So I, I think you have to give a lot of grace here on, this may be a plan. And if the awful, awful happens, whether this is what actually happens, probably not going to be the case because it's, it's, it's the best guess type of, type of thing. So I, I think you have to be cognizant of that too. And, and, um, I, I think, you know, Colton's probably going to be relied on to a certain extent to say, what are the statutes in Idaho as far as, uh, these types of things are concerned and doing some research in that area? Um, but it's a, it's, it's an unknown. And even in Colton's research, it'd probably be, this is probably a best guess of what, what, what the, the scenario will, will take place. All right. No, I don't have anything. All right, I always present these two caveats before. Talking out to, to, to groups is I, I don't speak on behalf of N W C C U. I base the knowledge on, on interpretation and of, of N W C C U policies as well as federal guidelines. Of NWCCU policies as well as federal guidelines. And another is an NWCCU member and as part of the peer review process, we're not, we are prohibited from publicly predicting the outcome of any NWCCU. Decisions. All right, so we're as a lot of the stuff you probably heard already, uh we had the. The. Teach-out plan that was already submitted and I see Amber has uh she played a big role in that as well as Dr. Doom and Dr. Sherry Jenkins. Where we gather part of um. We've got to take an inventory of all of our students or majors and provide them the information on what options that students have. Just in case if uh accreditation withdraw, that was very early in the process.
It was also very general. So the purpose of that really was to identify if we were, if we had a. A program that was not. Uh, the the that was so unique that we couldn't transfer students to they they really, so I'd say a gap analysis was really the fundamental purpose of the plan. It was not detailed, even though it sounds like a plan, it really was just here are the courses that we hear the programs that we offer. Are there programs around the state or in the region where students?
And and one more thing to add to that. I appreciate that, Dr. Swain is, it'll give NWCCU an idea because in the case of. Withdrawal accreditation and teach-out. NWCCUs required to document every. Students, what happened to them as a result of an institution. Either voluntarily or involuntarily losing their accreditation. So I'll give you an example in a few minutes of an institution that is. Going to teach out right now. All these items I'm going to talk about are part of procedures to close out a program, branch, campus or an institution, and that will be available to anybody, the accreditation gigs out there. Uh accreditation nerds, that'll be on the last slide as well as the corresponding federal citation to that, just in case. Uh, it is uh part of the concern shown by NWCCU. We're now moving on to that part. It just because. We submit a agreement, it doesn't impact our accreditation status, just like the submission of the teach-out plan. Didn't impact our status. It doesn't obligate NWCCU to take any action. Now, the timing, this is a planning phase for NWCCU and and any other type of relative parties for potential implementation. Uh, this will only impact us if the commission posts a withdrawal and I sees accreditation and the best advice. That we're doing is continue to do great work. With. Moving forward towards achieving good standing. If that occurs, then there's nothing to worry about there. So please continue to do the great work that you've done in the last. Few meetings. Now here's, this is uncharted territory. There's a lot of, ever since we received the sanction. We're one of the few institutions that have received a sanction. Because of a governance issue, most of the time, and I've been on visits before, same thing with Debbie. That we visit institutions really quickly visit because. The commission is worried about institution closing during the middle of the semester. And and the last thing they want is.
Make payroll.
You can't make payroll, right, exactly.
Okay, if I may ask a question, so was that the one in North Carolina?
That's what you asked, is your art college?
Yeah, yours.
Yeah, and and if I may. They also had financial issues, right?
It was all.
We we have you and Sarah and we're really doing, we don't have those issues.
And right, and the policy is written. For institutions that are having financial trouble. So this is uncharted territory. There are some questions that even US Department of Ed.
Is the West that's recently come under some scrutiny because of their financial difficulties? There's one in Washington State, uh University of Chicago, University of things. One of the, it's affiliated with the church.
Yeah, I think that's.
There's another, there's another one that was a more a community college.
But but the point is.
NWCC hasn't even given them. They went from good standing to closed.
They're going to go closed and there's hasn't been a blow.
Yeah, so.
Good standing under NWCCU to all closed.
Yeah, a lot of that again is finance. It's where like the they and I I'd say you'd you'd have to also attribute that to. Poor governance, because the board wasn't doing what they were supposed to do, that they were spending more money than they had. And they woke up one day and said, we can't make payroll, notifies NWCCU and NWCCU shuts them down. So the the purpose of this is 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 what they don't want to do is have students pay their tuition. And and then wait until the drop that dates pass so the students can't get their money back. And then halfway through the semester, the school closes and the students don't make progress towards whatever that semester was. And so. They're really, so it's almost all finances is the issue.
Yeah, so the the purpose of the teach-out plan is to protect the students and the money that's been paid, et cetera. And and as you said, and I want to say this again, so everybody hears the same thing. Uh, this, there's never been a situation where accreditation has been pulled for just governance, right? As far as we know, right?
Well, but I will say it, there was a study done uh. Like ten years, fifteen years ago where the top five reasons for uh sanctions were listed for recommendations for compliance. And board governance was one of those top five. So institutions have definitely been in trouble for governance issues, but they've resolved them usually before it gets to the point of show cause.
Right. Yeah, and and I'm not suggesting we back off at all, but quite the opposite, right?
And depending how which way the college goes, uh there are some other entities that have to approve uh NWCCU, uh US Department of Ed and perhaps the. State Board of Education, depending upon uh. Type of teach-out agreement. All right, so the first option, there's three.
Is. And we don't need to prove it?
Yes, the board does, NIC does.
But others.
If it gets to the point of implementation, you need to approve which of these three options you.
The first option is submitting a formal teach-out agreement to NWCCU. We provide a list of students and and that it's a it's a a spreadsheet very similar to the teach-out plan that was submitted. Uh, last year.
Except you go to the student level.
That's right, and. It. It supports the transfer of students to other institutions. There'll be some details in there such as how many credit hours an institution will accept from uh NIC students. Are it sometimes they'll allow us and there is some flexibility with the US Department of Ed guidelines that. There are some residency requirements that they don't have to meet. For example, if there's a student that has nine credit hours. And they can't for some reason. Finish out, they'll they'll allow that student to to go to another institution. And grant the degree based on only those nine. You can't transfer that way in the game, but this will provide flexibility. For students to complete their degree, their degrees with fewer fewest classes as possible. They want to make it as seamless as they can. Uh, if somehow we do lose, this option here really results in a permanent closure or demise of NIC. Teach-out agreements, that means that we're just allowing. Institutions to accept our students and transfer most likely. It it's it's not going to help out because it's not a practical option. Most students are not going to commute to Spokane Falls Community College, Spokane Community College. They're not going to drive down to Moscow. There's some, there's some folks that will have financial difficulties, especially if they try to transfer to an institution out of state that we have an agreement. Even though that there are options for. Students to reduce, will we, that that that's still an added cost to those students and yeah.
And it's important to note that that one doesn't commit the students in any way. The students can still do whatever they want, except they won't have the option of going to NIC because NIC will not be NIC anymore.
And really in analyzing, this option is an efficient use of tax dollars because if you if if we go this route. Most, there's a really good chance that a lot of students will probably. Go for an option B, maybe not even a complete and respective degrees, just. So that's option one, a formal teach-out.
This is the traditional.
Traditional teach-out plan.
You you hand your students off to other institution, you you make a plan and an agreement with those other institutions. You're going to take all the psychology students, you're going to take all the math students, you're going to take all the engineering students. We make those agreements, the students don't have to follow them, but we create a pathway for them to do it if if that's the what what.
And and then since there is a pathway, what do you do with welding and.
We do our best to line them up with.
Right, and but you may not be able to.
Right, or or the student may not choose the option that. Is out there because is.
So you know, we may say the the best thing for you to do, it it our agreement is for you to go to one of the Spokane schools, but. When they cross state lines, you start paying out of state tuition and they can't do it. They don't, they can't afford to commute.
They're just out of luck.
They're just out of luck.
Right.
I mean, that's real.
Obviously, no one wants.
But you can see why this is a most common avenue chosen by colleges who are in trouble for financial reasons and they know they're going to close. They don't, they don't, they aren't trying.
There's no pathway for the college, just like.
For the college. You're not in that situation.
Uh, the second is submit a formal temporary change of control to the commission. This is where we would request NWCCU and the US Department of Ed to transfer. To tran- temporarily transfer control of the college to another accredited eight entity and this will. Allow the college time for us to regain status as a separate accredited uh entity. This is the least disruptive of the three uh currently enrolled students in this case, uh. We would do our best to make sure that they don't even feel the impact of 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 the change. They will, we'll be able to offer face-to-face online courses, uh all the majors, we would just have to work with another entity. Uh, for enough time for the institution to make the 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 amount of changes necessary. Uh, to go back to good standing and then we would start the process again. Uh, so even Student Services Academics, we would be able to provide those to our students and and so that leaves us rough.
Classes continue here?
Right, absolutely. Was it, what would their degree say? It would be.
It's part of it.
It's part of the agreement.
But we don't, we don't know yet. I mean, and this is something where.
Yeah, that's one of the.
When we started asking questions, they said, well, nobody's done it this way. But there's no, no rule says you can't.
That's right. Great, that's a great question.
You're saying no one's ever done it this way, but it is.
Well, in uh Compton. Accreditation of another community college and the students received a degree from that college, but it only lasted like.
Six years.
Uh, yeah, a very short period of time and then control went back to the existing board and Compton re was re-accredited.
That was governance and finance.
Yes, yes.
And then the third option is we just simply it is, it was referred to early, if somehow we ignored a request. This is a uh an action that would be not favorable to NIC. Yeah, yeah, immediate withdrawal. And then even in the federal guidelines, it states that we would be ineligible to return to an accredited agency because we're, we already proved. If that case, we wouldn't be able to work with. Uh, an institutional creditor, it's the most disruption. Option of the three and the most recent example was an institution in Philly that we just mentioned earlier, University of the Arts. Where financial difficulty, they decided. Right, where. Uh, they they just didn't take action, then middle states accreditation decided to pull their accreditation at the end of the semester. So that's. Not a good, great option. We would not recommend.
So the process that you're asking for tonight, and my understanding is you're asking the board to. You're going to make a formal recommendation for the board to decide which of these three options. You will then write up the teach-out agreement and it will come back to the board for final board approval, correct?
Yes, that's right. And and there's a table here that I put up here that that just. Shows. Teach-out agreements are planned transition. It's a a permanent transition because. Uh, it 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 does mean that we totally. Give up our separate accreditation and if we ever wanted to start back, we could, we're still eligible. We would have to wait two years before even. Attempting, yes, and and even then that would take a year. So really talking about three years before.
The, I mean, a couple of schools in Idaho have done this, CWOI, CEI, and it took them six years under another as they emerged. It took them six years to to get to the point where they emerged as a. As an independent. Now it's without the three-year startup that you would have to have, so it'd be nine years.
It'd be a long time. Uh, the temporary change of control, that would be a planned transition. We would be temporary and yes, there's a possibility for regaining accreditation. The task list would be much smaller. Just because you're dealing with an institution that's or two that are in good standing. That's our goal is to is to get back to good standing and then. Try to get separate accreditation, of course, ignore it. Uh, it is unplanned closure. They would shut the doors on us at their first possible moment that they can, but without impacting students too greatly. And that erases any type of possibility of regaining accreditation. Uh, the next page. And there's some resources in case anyone uh here around the table or out there uh in Zoom land. Uh, would like to to read more closely the policy on NWCCU and the corresponding federal regulation. All right, anything else or anything?
Your recommendation.
Your recommendation would be to pursue a teach-out. I'm sorry, or temporary change of control, sorry.
So can you put that option back up since that's your recommendation?
You're seeing details of what that looks like?
Eventually we can. But but right now, we're starting all over. It looks like it's already started.
Oh, that was the first.
No, the first one is if we totally give out teach-outs and then we had to withdraw accreditation and cease to exist. If NIC wanted to start over again, once an institution receives a vote of withdrawal from the commission. Then uh it, we can't even apply for two years.
If you go back to that slide. Steve, you just need to make it that next, the bottom, the last chart. That blue chart, yeah, right here, that first teach-out agreement is option one. Okay.
Yeah, you should call that up.
Oh, got it, yeah, yeah.
Temporary change of control, which is the recommendation that.
Yeah, yeah, we're the second.
Talking to Greg, I take it.
Pardon me?
You're talking to Greg? Or just all of us? Who are you talking to, Debbie? Were you just talking to Greg when he was?
Well, Greg, Greg had said everything's starting over. That's that's just if option one. Okay.
This, so it's due. Two months from now and. Not started at all.
Well, so so some of it has started because we had to do the on on the on option one, we had to do the teach-out plan. We've already gone through this one, so we know that we have um. Programs in the region that we could transfer our students to, but it means a demise of the college.
And NWCCU has given a sample. Teach-out agreement. To follow.
The the second one is a temporary change of. Uh, control and and those are, you know, that is possible. We haven't um entered it, you know, we we've talked to. Folks about what that might look like, but we have no no firm plans. Folks, folks, anybody specific? Kind of one of like, so the logical ones are ULI, LC, we've talked to both of those. Uh, we can't transfer to Washington School, so both both uh ULI and LC.
Not another community college?
Well, the other community colleges in CSI or CFI.
Yeah.
You have to transfer control to them. When, well, so our our foundation was in ULI. You, we got our initial accreditation from ULI.
They're for you. They're not a community college.
It doesn't matter, doesn't matter. We just have to have another accredited entity.
Yeah, but different community colleges are much different than four-year universities.
LC is kind of a hybrid. Uh, they have two-year and four-year programs, um so they have a workforce training center.
I get the focus on you.
Are they, are they um more local?
What's that? Yeah, yeah, so Moscow is ninety miles south, moves into another thirty miles south of that, and then the others are, you know, at the bottom of the state or.
The community colleges, I'm talking. The community colleges, I'm talking.
They're much.
Yeah.
Both U of I and L C have a presence right here.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
And I was. The mechanics are what I'm most concerned about because I've. Exactly how would that occur? We have our own taxing district, that's where our money comes from. We're our own entity, we're set up under title thirty-three. Uh as a separate entity by the legislature. Uh what input have we had legally on that and from the legislature?
None from the legislature, I, I, the legislative, there's no, there's no legislation that that governs the demise. There's only the legislation that governs the creation of a community college. And so what, what we were theoretically thinking of, what does it take to go back? So we have, the only legislation that exists is the creation, so if we go back to that part, the one step before we emerge on our own. What would that look like? And that's the, that's kind of the foundational principle. Well, okay, I'll follow up on Mike's question. Foundationally, fundamentally, right now, what are you thinking that looks like? Because to this point, we're a. Taxing district, if we suddenly come under the authority of somebody else, are we a part of that college and trying to create some sort of subset? You know, you couldn't.
Have a sort of five oh one, something.
I mean, what does that look like from the mechanics of it?
Well, we have, we'd have to work with Colton to figure out what that, what that looks like.
We don't, are you giving us an input today, sir?
Not yet.
Cause here's, here's the problem, maybe I need to give a history lesson, but I've got, you know, red. Red siren, red lights and and red flags and and bells and whistles going off in my head because it feels like. We're coming to an eventuality here and we force down a path. And it's an interesting process because there's things that have occurred over the last three years in particular, in particular the last two years. And there's been a bit of a battle for control of this college, and we've seen some different actions through lawfare, through legislative attempts, through um. The ballot box, and we've seen some stuff through bureaucratic fiat. And this, some of the legislative got blown up in twenty twenty-three, three, three trails and then later a singular bill. We've seen some interesting legislative fiat through the S B O E and the assignment of of what I still consider illegitimate trustees to. Further narrative and agenda. Uh the lawfare has been uh a, some speed bumps, but has not changed the course. And uh while some games have been made at the ballot box, not enough to gain control. So I look at this as the last of the four problems, he's still alive. And I've heard U of I, U of I, U of I. Mike relates to a conversation he had with Superintendent Arnold out at Lakeland about something that our president said. I hear conversations that he shares to me that you had with him. And and some of them may have been flippant or casual or whatever, but it's like, oh, we can just go to U of I for a couple of years and we'd get back. I don't know if I believe that would happen, or telling people, hey, we can just go to the U of I. Your stuff out on websites, it's been out there for the last couple, three years, that people that are smarter than us tell me are being scrubbed. It's like there's a trail that's disappearing, this is something that's been proposed and out there for a couple, three years, which was a plan of attack. And now some of those breadcrumbs are disappearing because this is sort of the last ditch effort that. You know, I I don't believe in coincidences. And this is, this whole thing just seems, feels very coincidental that we're down a path. And this is the only path we're really being provided now, that's what we're being advised. So I guess if the conversation starts with U of I, I I'm already suspect of it.
I'm just gonna, you know.
Yeah, ninety.
I, that's, it's fine. I, I don't, I mean, I, I.
Well, can I speak? I'd like to speak.
Let me, let me finish one thought. And that is um. I I I want to preserve the college. And then.
At what cost, sir?
Okay, let, let, let me finish, I want, I want to preserve the college for the students and for the community. Um and the only way that we can do that is to transfer control. Um otherwise, the the college goes down. If if it's your decision, I I I'm making a recommendation, but it's your decision. We we have, we have two choices, we can, and we can try to go under C S I or C E I or voice uh or or C W I. We can, we can try to go under one of those, I don't have a preference, and that's why we didn't address. Um which college we might go under, we can go, you know, we can try to have negotiations with them. Uh what what I'm asking is the, um do we go with option one, which is the demise of the college, or do we go with option two? If we go with option two and you wanna go with C W I or C I or C S I, that's fine, I I don't. I I think the most logical thing is to go to U of I, but if you wanna go to another school, that's fine, we'll do it. I just, we just need guidance on which, what do you wanna do? And it's, it just felt too convenient, it feels like, well, their folks had have driven us to this corner and then it's put back on us trustees. Well, if you blow up the college or kill the college, it's on you, but no, we didn't drive that bus to there. Well, this has been a.
We're here, we're, we're here, we have to make it, we have to come up.
And and if if you, if if you want us to go with option two to one of the other community colleges, we're happy to do that. So fundamental question, which hasn't been researched, is what happens to us, to us at the taxing district, we're under somebody else's authority. Sorry, go ahead, Gary.
For audience and for those who are not familiar with our community, Cooney Health was a community uh. Hospital, it was owned by taxpayers, that board voted to give it to a nonprofit, which is not owned by taxpayers. Over sixty million dollars to a non- nonprofit that is not elected, they're self-appointed. And you talked about our duty of care that's on our. Board duty of loyalty, each board member must put the interests of the organization before their personal and professional interests. When acting on behalf of the organization in the decision-making capacity, the organization's needs comes first. What trustee Banducci is referencing is University of Idaho just acquired uh University of Phoenix. Tended to, they're trying to, they have had their sights on North Idaho College for a long time, for more than three years. The same faction, political faction, who gave away the hospital is now, it's what. Does seem quite coincidence to be lining up for North Idaho College next, those who are losing, it's my turn to talk, sir. Those who keep losing elections. Trying to hold on to control as best they can, the question is, what should we do for North Idaho College that's the best interest? What is the best on behalf of the organization? And I'll tell you. I have high confidence that if we ever go under University of Idaho's control, we will never. Come back to a community college focused on our community. So I may be open to another community college who cares about being a community college and keeping North Idaho a community college. We got great relationships with other community colleges, the fact that they weren't even like proposed, to me, it just seems.
But none of them was proposed.
You just mentioned that University of Idaho, we came from them ninety years ago with the coinciding of newspaper articles and the scrubbing of. Tactics and and just so many coincidences pointing to University of Idaho, if we want the best for North Idaho College. I've said what I had.
The, the. Let me summarize a little bit and and I'm agreeing with you. Um is the, the, we have three options, two of them really aren't very viable. The third one is it goes under temporary control, the issue is how does that occur? And I'm going to disagree with you that the legislature probably wouldn't need to be involved. I I think that they probably will need to be involved and probably some other agencies in the state government. Um so we, I think the board, my concern is the board needs input to that. On a continuous basis. A- and I understand the reality, we've talked about the reality, it has to go, i- if if we are forced into teach out. We have to preserve the school, the functions of the school and put them someplace, but I'm very concerned about. Uh the board being involved, needs to be involved on a weekly basis with that. And not, hopefully not in a confrontational standpoint, but in a supportive.
I think, I think if I could say something.
Chair. Yeah, a question, but I'll go on whatever. Go ahead.
I, I'm, I have to think on this more, but I would say. Option one would right now be the preferred one with the, and we can put in a caveat to work with the legislature. For, you know, option two, clearly defining that would retain North Idaho College as an organization.
I, I think there's some things we could do with the legislature. But we'll, we'll have to work that issue.
I'd like to hear.
Yeah, let's.
Colton has some input I hope.
Yeah, th- this was a question, I guess for.
It's probably too long of a period. We have to retain the organization, not a predatory organization, we can't.
My advice is continue to do the good work.
And we've just talked about the past hour and a half.
Right, right.
It it does, we continue.
It, it it's a very sensitive issue with certain parties, we need to talk about it. And we need to set up a plan and a mechanism to work through that. And make sure we come up with the best options for the community, option for the community and the college. And I think everybody's on that.
I'd have to say, we have to even watch our own narrative, even within this own board meeting, as in the demise of the college, as in. We, this is a backup plan only, and the workup, we're never gonna get there, so it's. Even the president's own words during.
We started off by saying, we started off by saying that.
You're talking about much more sensitively.
Okay, you know, Colton, you wanna go ahead and talk to Steve?
You mentioned earlier um. When you were talking about approvals with maybe the State Board of Education, US Department of Education. That there may be. Questions about what avenue we can take and how we can take it. And listening to the rest of your presentation, I interpreted that to relate to option number two or the change of control. Or what, what were those questions and who, who was raising those? I think that might help clarify for the board.
That would be both because there'd be, if if those other, if there's an institution, for example, that that, let's say it's C E I. We would have to get their governing board to approve. Because there's gonna be some, some variances of policy and procedure that would need to take place, especially with. Uh residency requirements with tuition, those things would need to be uh run by the the respective uh board, the entity. Uh for approval, or even have to give a special allowance as part of that decree.
Is that something that's raised by the US Department of Education or the State Board of Education? When you're saying there are unanswered questions.
Well, just because uh. It goes back to this policy, how it was developed, it's, it's usually when an institution loses accreditation. Especially with the University of the Arts, they were just in dire straits. And for some reason, either uh pre-planned or not, uh they decided not to do anything and they lost their accreditation. Uh there are other institutions, they know that are closing, uh they're going through their, their uh teach out plans because of financial, but in this case. N I C operationally sound, uh we're financially viable, uh the issues though, that we have to address all. Standards and availability requirements, including governance, the board is on the right track, we just need to continue that way. And 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 at least try to improve on that, this is only a backup, that's it. It's not, it doesn't obligate, if we submit something or to N W uh C C U, that, that doesn't obligate them. To execute it.
A couple of costs though, then, one is, personally. I would, if we just, you know, looking at this as strictly as a backup plan, cause obviously I expect us to get our accreditation back, otherwise unless there's just games being played, which I hope not. Uh I don't mean to be the cynic.
Todd, will you repeat what you just said? I just did that.
I said, since this is just supposed to be a backup plan, and I would hope we'd get our accreditation back, and I just hope there are no games being played, I I've been, I'm a bit of a cynic, but I'm just gonna, you know. So let's assume that everybody's doing this. I would be more comfortable with L C S C just cause I know they can work with our C T E better. Or, and I hadn't thought about this until trustee McKenzie brought it up, one of our fellow two-year univers- universities because. C S I sponsored C W I and then C S I essentially sponsored C E I. So they had to go under their accreditation of a fellow community college, but there was never a concern. There never a concern that they were gonna be permanently stuck under that or that they could be absorbed by the other community college, whereas I think there's a, an inherent. Concern, I think, in the back of my mind of a four-year institution swallowing this up. And we end up in the belly of the whale and we never come out. So.
Chair, I mean, ever since I've been elected and on the campaign trail, there's been certain, I've noticed a political theme of. What's your thoughts of turning North Idaho College into a four-year university? And I've always responded saying, no, I like it being a community college. So. I agree with trustee Banducci, I'm greatly concerned and I feel like everyone should be too.
So I I appreciate the the tenor of the conversation, this is a a very intense subject. But we're handling it, I think, very well, I really appreciate that, uh did one of you guys have a?
Yeah, um are, are, are we gonna hold a vote tonight on this? We can't vote, I mean, I know, I, that's, that's what I. We can't hold a vote, it's popular news, okay. Do we have, are these action items on the agenda there?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is an action. Right, this is action discussion.
Might change that, so that you.
Yeah, I put that on there, um what I want to do is make sure it's a team effort. And that we don't wait until.
The last.
The last minute, that's all I am really concerned about, and so we can make an emotion or. What I'm interested in is uh that Colton has been doing research. Uh some of our research shows that maybe some of this won't work legally and we need to, the. Uh if we have to do it, we need the support of the legislature to enable it, right? And we would, if that's necessary, and and that's no. Not anything derogatory about the administration, but the board is supposed to be providing oversight. And and this, boy, I think we really need to provide oversight on almost like a weekly basis. And we need to have Colton involved uh because he, and he has been already out going on and researching it. And if we're, because if you look at the options and we and I have discussed the options. If we get our accreditation pulled, the only way that we can tell to really leave the community whole. Is by putting it on another school, the issue is the local community loses control and. Well, is it fair or not, I I'm, 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 I'm just be frank. I would want that in some kind of an agreement.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what. Where, where the agreement would, would say. Yes, but are we subject to that agreement? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so. So, yeah, but let me, I'm just saying.
Would that be, thought about be part of the agreement? Okay, is that an agreement then that is just between us and the other institution? Or is that subject to approval by the N W C C U and still subject to the N W C C U actually restoring our accreditation? So we can make an agreement with an organization and say in two years we come back.
Yeah.
But if the N W C, N W C C U, excuse me, doesn't grant us back our accreditation, we don't come back anyway after two years. So we're still stuck under that umbrella, maybe indefinitely.
Well, it depends, I think. N W C C U, yes, has to do agreement, I would advise to have all those details in that agreement. And the provisions for us to return to good standing wouldn't need to be in the, in in that.
So uh what I'm really after is the mechanics.
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't know.
Right, and and but I don't want it waiting until the last minute and, cause it's due on the thirty-first and our, our board meeting is on the twenty-third. And so it's really a done deal at that point, we'd like to be involved.
Absolutely.
During the whole summer and hopefully make that a uh supportive effort, not too much of this, right?
Right.
But it's a very sensitive issue, it impacts the community.
We're, we're looking for guidance, um if if you wanna go with option two. Um and have us explore, I think C S I has the most experience with this. As a community college, we're happy to explore C S I and L C S C, come back.
Go ahead, your turn.
I think that what you've brought forth to this board is three ideas for us to um talk about. This it seems to be the most beneficial to our community and to our students. There's a lot more questions that need to be answered, the financial aspects of how this works, the mechanics of how this works, all of this is super important. We need to have that information before we can even actually debate it, so there's not enough here for us to have a simple conversation. A lot of people have work to do, so I think that this should be the first thing that we, yes, go forward with this. But if this isn't gonna pan out and it's not gonna be something that will actually work, then we need to decide which other one. Makes sense and.
Traditionally, I mean, the only other option is a traditional teachout.
I think we have consensus that we're not doing option three.
I don't want to.
Yeah.
But that might actually.
So we will. So if, if I, if I may, I, I would. And, and somebody needs to make a motion, but. Proceed with a partnership with a community college to operate under option B. And keep the board informed as on progress towards that.
No, 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 I think.
What, what I had in mind was when I asked for this action item was simply that we ensure. That the administration is working on a weekly basis with the attorney and, and if necessary, the legislature. That's it. Because if we don't know.
I think they need, I think they need more than that. I think more. If I may, if I may encourage. I think we, there's three colleges or, or three categories of colleges that I'm interested in. I would be open to any community college, and I think CSI would be our leading one. So if CSI is not open, then go to another one. Just keep going. Okay? LCSC, I think, could pass this board for a vote. I don't know. I don't see any lot of head shaking, but you may see if they're even an option.
I, I talked to the president. She's happy to, happy to part.
Okay.
Hasn't been a just you by conversation.
Or even if there's a. Non Idaho, non-conflict of interest. Organization. That we could see if they're even interested.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Trump. Is, is there any? I, I think this is option. Three of what Greg was just talking about, community colleges. LCSC maybe, is there anything that precludes us? You said something earlier about have to be in Idaho. Is there anything that would preclude us from working with Spokane Community College or Spokane Falls Community College with that group?
Because we, the, our state doesn't have any authority over them. And so if we're trying to make an agreement and get our legislature to approve, we'd basically be handing over. NIC to an out-of-state entity for control. To get states don't like to do that.
You know, if we had a binding contract and all the rest, that that probably doesn't.
To adhere to Idaho laws.
And we, yeah.
Okay, no, I just wanted to hear that one.
In part six hundred, the federal government regulations. Don't recognize a change of control when it goes to another public institution in the same state. And so if it goes to another public institution in another state, that would trigger a change of control provisions in the rights.
Thank you, sir.
Or change of ownership. Yeah.
Sorry.
Change of control. The change of control would then be a change of ownership.
Okay.
It's a much more, would be.
We've, Stephen mentioned, that's why I figured out to flesh that out just a little bit more to make sure I understood that. When you said, now you expand now, that makes sense.
I, I think all this would require. Whatever we do, if, if it's option one, it's going to require NWCCU approval. Option two is going to require NWCCU approval. Probably buy-in from the state board on both options. And we want to keep them involved. And they, and, and if we have to go to the legislature, I, I just don't know. We, we have until August thirty first. And getting the legislature to do something between now and August thirty first, I, that's why I don't know if it's practical to involve the legislature. I'm sure they want to be.
Well, we have two of them right here, and I suggest either LD's two, three, four, and five would be receptive to us if we needed their help. We reached out to our legislators. I got all twelve of them with my phone right here for two, three, four, and five. I bet I could send a text to all twelve of them at one time and ask them to respond. So I bet if our contingency, if we actually wanted to, we'll have a relationship with them and seek their help as our legislators, as their college. You know, be amazed what we might be able to accomplish.
They're interested in.
Approach.
They're interested in things working out well. And, and we even have one person here from the education committee.
So we have, we, I mean, we, we have the, we, we have the general guidance that we need. I, I, I would, I think it'd be helpful to have in the, in the form of a motion.
Drafted.
To, to go after that.
Question, you mentioned that you'd received some sample agreements from NWCC related to option one?
Yes.
But is there anything that exists related to two?
No, we're, we're, we will be the, we'll, we'll be the example.
Well, there's the California.
But it's different.
They didn't have any.
Financial. NWCCU, I think, and the State Board of Education and the federal regulatory agency is going to. Well, it's going to be cautious, I think, and accommodating for this process because. The. The secretary can step in if due process rules aren't followed, or if standards and criteria aren't. Applied in an even-handed manner, or you know, of respecting the agency's mission. So I, I think they would want to be accommodating. Because this would be a flagship. An, an example that is going to be set. And so I, I think that they would be very responsive to our requests and our inquiries. And so I, 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 I just don't feel that there would be an adversarial relationship on this. And I don't think they're going to want to rush into having to implement one of these options as well. Just as a general.
They, they want to protect.
So.
The key, I, I think the key thing that, and I have brought it up with NWCCU is that. The, the policy, the, the rules and regulations that govern this were written in Washington DC and Seattle. Where you can throw a rock and hit a couple of community colleges. That's not the case here. And so if you're, if you're honestly trying to look out for students. So the students can continue their education, then option one for us is not viable. We have to do something with option two. Who that, who we partner with? I, I, I mean, I have, I, I think it would be, in some ways, there would be things that would be easier going one versus the other. But if, if the, if the preference of the board is to go with another community college, that's fine. It, it sets us down a path where we can actually start to solve the problem. We can't, we can't do both. We have to. We have to be able to focus on one of those because it's going to get complicated.
Yeah, and, and really that's my discomfort is. One, is it going to come back? And two, the mechanics of all the details. I, I, I can't believe there's not going to be legal issues and. Yeah, so. It's, yeah, it's going to be bumpy, but we need a parachute and. We need one without holes in it. What if we find out, we get down to the end and what we have in mind and approved doesn't work?
Well, we hope, we certainly never have to test it. Well, there's going to be a lot of backcourt.
Yeah. So I'm asking for communication. That's. As I think it's, it's too early to put any other constraint on the administration.
Chair, may I ask?
Go ahead.
Mr. Curtis, and I'm not trying to go around the president here, but I'm looking at you kind of rubber hits the road. You're our accreditation guy. Trustee Corkle alluded to earlier. We may need to make a motion here. We have the ability to, that we confirm. It's an actual discussion and there's something to authorize you guys to move forward with the choice of an option. May I ask you, how would it be helpful to you? Can you give us a suggestion of how we might want to word that motion?
Can I propose?
Do you have something?
I got something.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. If you have something, sir.
There you say. If you want to answer.
Do we need a, a little break?
No.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Go ahead. Five minutes, it's.
Great, work on it, work on it.
We need, we need ten minutes to wrap up, so. I can go as late as you want, but I don't know about the rest.
This is a very important discussion.
Absolutely.
I'd like to have them. Can we do five minutes?
We're going to have a laugh.
Everybody will hear that. Chair, can we do five minutes for round the break?
Yes, five minutes. Ready, reset. The best we can do, but we're moving progress forward on this. This is great. Okay, so. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Almost there. You're reaching me.
I just asked if we could pick one for the other. Pick option one, fine. Pick option two, fine. They'll give us an option that says do option one and option two as a backup. Because we do, I don't have to stand.
But we're going to pick option four.
Exactly what you're getting because we, I can't, I can't do it.
The motion and that.
Well, let's see. Okay, so. I motion, are we back in session?
We're back in session.
I motion to proceed with option one and be prepared to propose option one by the August board meeting.
Option one or option two?
Option one. Additionally, this motion orders the NIC administration to develop option two's temporary change of control. Among solely the following Idaho's institutions. Other community colleges, I think that's clear enough unless you want me to write it. Within Idaho, other community colleges within Idaho. And Lewis and Clark State College to work and, and to meet weekly with the board chair and legal representation as the chair sees fit. Did I miss? Did I miss? Did I miss any institutions that people care about?
Can you? Can you read that one more time? I want to understand how the two options interplay here.
So there's still legal concerns with option two. Like, there's a lot of details that need to be fleshed out. There's.
Taxing district, stuff like that.
Taxing district, like we, like, I think there's a consensus that if option two can. Legitimate, thought-out plan put before the board, it has a chance of passing. Okay? But we're not passing that option two with what we know tonight. Okay? And so we're saying proceed with option one, as in if you don't get any option twos passed from now till the end of August. We're presenting August, the option one. But in the meantime, institutions that we are open to. And other community colleges and LCSC for option two.
We need to develop. And you're going to make your motion. We need to get back in order.
Okay, but, but that, that I'm explaining, I'm explaining.
Well, actually, let's go do a second one.
Well, actually, let's go through a second, we'll do discussion, he's right.
We need to get back in the parliament.
Legal, will you please read what you've got and then make sure, make sure it has everything we got?
Sure.
Okay, and I was gonna say so moved.
And I can shoot this to you. My motion to proceed with option one and be prepared to propose option one by the August board meeting. Additionally, this motion orders the NIC administration to develop option two's change of control amongst solely the following Idaho.
Temporary change of control.
Additionally, this motion orders the NIC administration to develop option two's temporary change of control amongst solely the following Idaho institutions. Other community colleges within Idaho and Lewis and Clark State College. And to work and meet weekly with the board chair and legal representation as the chair seems fit. I just copied the motion.
I will so move that for a second so we can have discussion. I'm gonna so move that so we can have discussion.
Let me explain what that motion is. Is if there's no board motion for an option two from now till August thirty-one, we're going with and uh, option one at, at that board meeting because nothing else is present.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Chair. Okay, so we're in discussion, I seconded it. I just heard what you said, so what you're saying is the way this motion that you're writing it to be interpreted is that the default is option one unless we've been presented an option two that the board accepts between now and the August board meeting. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Say your question again.
Now, if we have not had a presentation for an option two to the board prior to and accepted by the board or prepared to accept by the board at the August meeting, then the default would be option one, and you're asking them to be prepared for option one unless they can bring us a viable option two. You know, we can accept that's legal and.
I think we should clarify that at the end. The default option is option one unless the board takes action on option two.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. I, I couldn't support that because of the default. I don't want to put the board in a position where if this doesn't happen, then this will happen. And I, I just, you know, it's either.
It's either option three then, which we all really.
It could be option two. It may option two. Tell the board, tell the administration to go with option two and bring us all the variables that are involved there because we're way ahead of ourselves in trying to make a decision on this, right? Because we don't have all the information. And there's a multitude of things we need to know on that. And we need that kind of research before we can make a legitimate recent decision.
And we may get to a point where we find out option two is not an option. So your thought on that is if we just do it for option two now, that we could still at that meeting, if we get to the August meeting and we're like, or somewhere before, where we don't have an option two for whatever the reason.
Whatever the reason.
Whatever, then we go, now we're defaulting to one and here we are.
We don't need, excuse, like, we need to say, like, they have two months. They can't, it takes more than two weeks to say to go with option one. I mean, it's a lot of work to do option one. I didn't.
Excuse me, trying to follow procedure here, but it's not a practical option because this college was shut down. It no longer function.
As a backup plan, sir, that's still a backup plan.
This college would no longer function and the students could not afford to come here.
Can we put it on the screen? Because I'm not convinced we're even talking about the same option one. The other, the other slide. So when you say option one, Greg, what are you referring to?
The teachout agreement to the top row.
The top row, okay.
Okay, let me make.
Go ahead. Have a question.
Assumption is that we have to make a decision tonight. I think the only decision we have to make is that we set up a process to work together. And the issue is that if this is done correctly, which I assume it would be if we're working together, we have decision points. We can set up decision points and we can come back and have a special meeting if we get right down the road and say option two isn't gonna work. We're not gonna wait till the last minute.
That's what this motion.
This motion says they have to do one and I have a question, I'm concerned about uh, should we be investing all that effort in one before we even get down the road?
Now you're getting into operations. All this is saying is by August thirty-first, it needs, we need to have one or two. And if the president wants to invest in option two to present to the board for two weeks, a month, the day before August, that's his call.
But Terry has been waiting.
Oh, Terry, I'm sorry, Terry. I, I didn't realize.
If you look at the duration of transition, we're looking at one temporary option. And the other two are permanent. It makes the most sense to use all of our resources and don't laugh at me. Wow. Use all of your resources to work towards something that could actually have a chance of success, maybe put a shorter timeline on it. If you come back to the board, maybe we have to work the summer as a board, maybe we have to have a couple of meetings.
One.
Go for option two first.
One alternative, I just want to finish up. Is obviously to say we need a report on probably work together weekly and we need a report back to the board to decide whether we were to go in one, one, one month.
That was my point. Where, I'm sorry, Terry, what you done? Kind of to build on what both you two said and you two, Greg, because there is a concern here if we don't, if we don't run these in parallel and the president's indicated a, a challenge with time and staffing and everything, and it's summer, whi- which I can understand. To your point also, though, we're gonna have to have a timeline. And, and maybe Steve, you're gonna have to help us with this because if we're not running these in parallel, how long do we devote to option two? How long can we allow option two to be the sole focus? Without having the ability to pivot to option one if option two does not prove viable. So in other words, if we pursue option two for a month and a half and then realize it's not viable, we only have two weeks to talk about option one, we may be in big trouble. So, so what's gonna be the reasonable timeline that if we're only gonna focus on option two initially where we could pivot into one if, if two's not viable? Because we have to give ourselves enough time to finish out one then.
I thi- I think it, it's gonna take us a week or so to figure out. In a couple of weeks, to figure out if, if option two with CSI or one of the other community colleges is viable. And, and if not, I, I mean, LC's already expressed an interest in, in working with us, so.
Work with us, legality and the taxing district, all the, there's some difficult, you know, talk to our legislators if anything else we need to understand that for how that works.
Whether how we do this really hinges on the report that comes from the NWCCU. So we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves here, you know, and all these guys need is some direction to do some research on, let's just say, all the options.
I'd agree, I just want some timeline so we had.
This isn't a decision that we have to make at the end of August because we're gonna be visited in October by the commission. And then we have the seven, seven, ten, what, three, seven, ten.
At the end of August, so that is our hard date.
Go ahead, Terry.
If you were able to give us a timeline on, if you had to work on option one back from August thirty-first, when would the last day that you would be able to start on it and complete that? And then we can talk about how long can you work on option two?
Probably three weeks to, to get option, option one is much simpler. So let's move the thing and, and by a month and a month, because we got two months essentially, right?
Yeah, so if we have a decision point in a month, because we've got, this week we have fourth of July and all of that.
End of the first month of August.
Right.
No later than that, I would say.
I think we're all happy with the second part of my motion. Should we have it read?
Mr. Boils, are you working on that, sir?
Yeah, the motion that's been.
I second the motion. Do you withdraw your motion or are we looking for an amendment?
I'm happy to withdraw it and I think we have what we're all talking about in the second part.
Okay, I'll withdraw my. Oh, trustee McKenney, I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you, sir. I'll withdraw my.
Do you want to restate the new motion?
The new motion. Will you please start after additionally? Yes, what you have highlighted. So this motion orders the NIC administration to develop option two's temporary change of control amongst solely the following Idaho institutions. Other community colleges within Idaho and Lewis and Clark State College. And to work and meet weekly with the board chair and legal representation as the chair deems fit.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. I gotta put an end date on that. End of, uh, end of July. Yeah, we should know by end of July, did you say, sir, three weeks you'd have a know if we can do two or not? We should, yeah, I mean.
If we're working the other way, we would be three weeks.
So let's give you a mark.
I think if we get to that. So that gives us until the first, into the first week of August.
Dude, that would be August second, first week. Full week would be the ninth. I'd be more comfortable. That's less than three weeks if it's a nine, so I'd be comfortable with the second. That's Friday the second.
That sounds good to me. Okay. We have a lot of, hang on, folks, we've got a lot of things going on that's really intense, but it's all good.
That gives us about three and a half weeks, about three and a half weeks before the board meeting.
I do have a question for Steve. Steve, if, if they get to the point where, let's say, you know, obviously option two is the, the favorite option here. If, if they, if they are pursuing that and look like things are going well with that, then the rug gets pulled out from under them. And just so you know, folks, we're in the summertime. I mean, a lot of these top administrators may be in Europe, who knows where the heck they may be.
That's my concern.
Yeah, uh, they, they, you know, it may not be easy to work with these other colleges because this is the time they generally go on vacation. Uh, and I know that because I've tried contacting three community college presidents and they're all of the country. But, uh, how, how much could be said, like, okay, we put this big effort into two, it's not working. And so our teachout plan is to do this option one. But because of time constraint, have developed the full plan. Is, is, would that be acceptable to the authority?
No, we would need to, we'll have to have a full plan. May I say one thing? I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Board, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
We're, we're gonna have the motion and I don't want to put more words in the motion or clutter of everything, but I'm gonna guess that as you know, bright, educated man, you're gonna have an idea as we move along how this is starting to play out and you're gonna have a feel for, hey, this looks really possible or, oh, we got some real hurdles here and it's, so we may know even sooner than, say, August second if we need to pivot or not, if we really think we're on the right path. And I would just encourage you guys that if you start to feel compelled one way or the other, that you give us as much runway as you can.
Sounds like there's, we need to, if, if we find out that option two is a dead end, we don't necessarily need to have a special board meeting deployed.
No, it's option one at that.
It's not gonna be smooth.
We obviously, first, first priority. We work at the issues.
I think that's unacceptable.
You guys are pretty quiet over there. Hang on just a minute. I wanna get Terry the floor. Terry, do you have any other comments? Brad? Okay, go ahead and read your motion.
All right, this motion's changed. Getting wording and everything better. This board designates option two as the NIC's, as NIC, not the, this board designates option two as NIC's priority in responding by end of August to NWCCU. And to work and meet weekly with the board chair and legal representation as the chair seems fit.
Oh, we did not put the August second date in there.
I need the August second date in there to report back to the board.
Yeah, we have to have a, a decision point by August second whether to proceed with option two or not.
And it's, and if option two is not viable.
Produce a recommendation by August second.
Not later than, NLT.
Good discussion, board. Good job.
And hopefully no sort of timeline. It's not another grandson going turkey hunting, I hope. We don't want to miss something like that. That's important stuff. I had a picture and video sticking my grandson.
We gotta read, we gotta read the whole thing.
I haven't said anything yet, my dear. I was waiting for him to read the final version.
This is the whole thing, you have it. This board designates option two as NIC's priority in responding by end of August and to work to NWCCU and to work and meet weekly with the board chair and legal representation as the chair seems fit to produce a formal recommendation no later than August second, twenty twenty-four to NIC's board.
Suzie, now I will say, so moved and I will second that. Thank you for checking on that.
You second. We, I think we beat it.
We beat it to death.
All right.
Just a minute, okay?
Oh, no, no, this is, no, have your mouth.
So let's go ahead and have a vote. We should just, Terry.
Are there any discussion or are we okay?
They said no discussion. Right?
Well, I'm making sure he's got it right.
Since it's your motion, I assume it's I.
I.
Okay. Chair votes I, it's five zero, okay? So we have instructions and thank you so much.
We're not leaving yet.
I know that. Everybody for a calm decision, a discussion, helps out, friendly and, uh, in terms on a very important topic. I think this is really good progress for us.
Thank you.
Hey, look at the last page on your agenda, please. Because our hope is that with all the time that has to be spent on this, it never has to be used because you're gonna resolve all these recommendations that we have to write to in the report. Okay, so I want to explain the coding to you just for, real quickly and ask that you please read these recommendations, okay? We're sending you the, the recommendation and the, the NWCCU's advice to the institution when we send you the, the reports of each recommendation. But, and then we send you all the back, all the, uh, response and we show you the evidence or a link to the evidence. If you look at this, it says sent to trustees if it's the three that were already sent to you, okay? Then there are some that says, that say almost ready to send. Those are gonna be sent to you on, on July the okay?
Or Monday.
Okay. July fifth. And then if you see, if you look at the third recommendation on the sheet, which says recommendation two, spring twenty twenty-three, after that, it says repeat response to risks. So all of this is that you need to respond to the risks and we wrote with Steve to every one of the risks, okay? So that one basically is done and it will be sent to you, okay? And then if you look at the ones that are highlighted, those recommendations are either very similar to each other or they are very similar to another response that's already written. The reason for that is because this encompasses three different reports, right, Steve? So response of the end of wine. So there might, there are three different that talk about training, all right? So some those we fill over to the other.
The reviewers don't want to read the same thing over.
This is the most important.
Repeat response to risk.
Because that was one of the risks that they took. Okay.
It just seems like highlighting the board responses, I mean, I guess, when did they visit last? But I feel like we've had a board or two response.
And that's what we wrote up under. That's why. Okay, and you'll see it. We'll send it to you, yeah.
One really quick thing, because we're all right here. Oh, you passed around that list and on the first block of all the trainees, my name wasn't on.
And actually, I passed around the wrong list. And there was ones where he let me know and we.
And, and Todd, that, that, that's a work in progress.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, I have been there on occasion.
He did not have the notes from the early ones, okay?
Okay, and Ken, on that same chart, to finish that up, he, he got permission to be gone for one because he was involved in a lawsuit in Texas and had to do a lot of research.
Okay, but that's not. I'm gonna get into.
No, but we can already note that.
Yes, we did.
Have we done? I don't have a gavel, but.
Hi, everybody.